I'm gonna call the roll and say here so we can get a visual and an audio record for people who may listen to the thing and not watch it on a screen. Dana Oviat.
Here.
Nip Tanner.
Here.
I'm Rick Smith, I'm the chairman and I'm here and here comes Beth Steele who will join in a minute. And Larry Dunn as an alternate.
There.
Here and Beth Steele.
We see a green bag, Beth. Oh, there we go. Okay.
Yeah, unmute your microphone, please.
I don't have internet. For some reason, I don't have internet. So on my phone, I'm trying to figure out how to get on the.
Okay, so I'm calling the roll right now. So Beth Steele, say here.
Here.
So Beth Steele is here and Lynn Marshall, who's another elected alternate, as is Larry Dunn, is also present and she needs to be unmuted. So we have a quorum. Okay, so that's calling to order. The time was seven. We called the roll. Here's a statement. For some reason, I don't quite understand. I have to read before every Zoom meeting. I'll be as quick as I can. This meeting of the zoning commission will take place through Zoom meeting technology. My name is Rick Smith. I'm chairman of the commission. The host of the Zoom meeting is Larry Dunn, who's an alternate zoning commissioner, commission member. The alternate, the participants in this meeting will be the commission members, elected alternates, staff and the commission's council. Commission's council won't be here tonight and staff also had another commitment. So it's the members and the alternates. Anyone speaking should state their names prior to speaking each time they speak. Participants who would like to comment on an item or share a screen item should indicate by using the raised hand icon or by raising your hand in front of the screen. And I'll recognize this person. Again, commissioners and alternates only. Because as a business meeting, there is no public comment tonight. To offer a motion or second emotion commissioners should physically raise their hand and be acknowledged by the chair. Vote on a motion will be called upon individually by the chairman. Members of the public who have logged on or called in will be observing, but there will be no public comment. Members of the public can submit comments by writing to the commission after the meeting for consideration on any item discussed. And finally, and the most important part, I think, is the recording of tonight's meeting will be posted on the town of Groton's website within seven days of the meeting. So if you've missed it, or you know, somebody would like to know what went on, they can always get on the town's website and and view the actual meeting. Okay, agenda items for tonight. There are four, three actually. Approval of the draft proposed ordinance to regulate short term rentals and knowing process for obtaining public input on the short term rental issue. Selection of the date for a special meeting to obtain informal public comment on short term rentals. So that's our sole agenda items for the night. The first thing I would ask for is a we have not had any changes to the document for the last two meetings. So that's pretty much appears to be the document we'll take to public meeting. Is there a motion formally? So we have a record of the commission approving taking that to the public informational meeting that yet to be scheduled. Is there a motion to approve the document to go to the informal public meeting with?
Well, when you say.
I'll offer the motion if I have. Okay, go ahead, Beth.
I just have a question. We talk about approving the motion. I mean, we're approving it for the purposes of public discussion at a workshop, not because we overall agree with all of the things that are in it.
Exactly. And it's not, please, let's keep our terms clear. It's not a workshop that conveys round table, interaction, discussion, and we're going to talk about the rules of how we intend to get public comment a little bit later in the meeting, but the advice I have received repeatedly is try not to call it a workshop because it conveyed something under zoning rules that is not what's intended. This is in public information meeting for us to receive input from the public.
Okay, so I guess I'll make motion then.
Okay, so the motion is to approve taking the document to the informal public input meeting.
Exactly. That's my.
Okay, is there a second? Dana Oviat, second. By the way, I'll be taking notes here too because Sue's unavoidable shoot. One of her other jobs has a meeting tonight, so motion best deal Dana Oviat, take to public meeting. Okay, discussion on that motion. Larry.
We're a point of order. Who are going to be the five voting members tonight?
That's a good question. Right now we have four. Blake has not yet joined. Frankly, I don't recall if he said he was going to be able, he may be out of town. I do know Larry was next one up in the rotation, although we haven't had an alternate sit for
In a while.
A long time, three months or so. But I do remember I looked at it yesterday. You're up, so for the record, I will see Larry Dunn as the alternate representing or seated for Blake Powell, who's absent. Be seated for Blake. All right, and Beth, I mean, I'm going to infer that your comment that you made prior to making the motion is a comment on the motion that this does not convey that we're approving this document in any way. We're just saying by the motion that this is the document we're taking to the public to get their comment.
Right, that's what I wanted to make clear. Thank you.
Okay. All right, discussion on the motion. Seeing none, all those, Nip.
Nip Tanner, I'm not going to vote in favor of it because I am not as did at least it's, and I think it's a mistake to take seriously flawed document to the public.
Okay, we'll see that by your vote, but appreciate the comment. Okay, other comment on the motion. Okay, seeing none, all those in favor, I'll call the roll. Dana Oviat.
Hi.
Nip Tanner.
No.
Beth Steele.
Hi.
Larry Dunn.
Hi.
And I'm an I, so that is three four to one motion passes. Okay, second order business is process for obtaining public input on the short term rental issue. You've seen the draft, Larry can put that up on the screen. It's been on the one drive for since last week. I have a series of questions that have arisen that I'd like to either make the comment that I'm going to make this change or ask you for your, your opinion on the. Hang on a second. I'm still having screen problems here.
It should be displayed.
Yeah, the document is up, but I'm having a hard time seeing everybody here. Let me just. All right, I'm gonna have to scroll back and forth. Okay. Does anybody have any comments on the first page, which was the graph public input plan for soliciting comments? There were 10 items on it. We've done three of them so far. But I, before we go to the rules for the public involvement, I wanted to see if there's any comments on some of the other things. These are the things we talked about at the last meeting, for example, posting at Carson's if they're willing in the package store, if they're willing, things like that. Anybody with comments? Larry?
Yeah, yeah, I think, you know, if we're, as we're going through this, are we making decisions that in fact, somebody would be identified to approach of the businesses, et cetera, for posting or whatever we agreed to in point three? We going through that tonight as well, the, the process and the execution?
Well, first question first, I would have Sue go and make those contacts and see if she can post them there. Ask the people at Carson's, ask them at the package store. She's got afternoons free and that seems appropriate for her to do, but then some of them may say no, and that's fine. Number three, though, I mean, we're already kind of into it. That was more of an explanation. We've already done the email to tell knowing basically what we're up to. That one pager that I sent out last week. The agenda, you get down into item seven, the meeting announcement will have other things in it. We're not there yet. Those are actually out of order. Number four will come at the same time as seven, for example. So other, I don't know if I answered you entirely there, Larry.
Well, that, yeah, Larry Dunn again, the question was today, we're going to agree upon the process and agree upon the execution. For example, you know, I'm ready to pull the trigger on number five. I've got approval from, you know, the town to support a no ink announcement on their page. So part of this would be to authorize me to go forward and get and execute that. Action.
Yeah. Still to be written, but yes, I mean, tonight, if we approve this two page document, that's going to be the guidelines for how we put the issue out to the public and how we tell them our expectation of how they, they'll be commenting. So yeah, I mean, if we approve this tonight, then you know, that gives you the authorization to do number five. Except for the fact that we have to decide on the wording to be said, which you and I can work on.
All right.
Okay, other comments on this? Page one. Beth?
What is, if we were to put an announcement in the New London Day, what is that announcement going to say?
John suggested we not do that.
Yeah, I'm with that. I don't really see the point personally, but.
Yeah, that's why I said consider. I mean, other people have said, yeah, we ought to do it. John's advice is we don't get much mileage out of that. I think I had said at the last meeting, we don't get as much mileage as making the no ink email list as full as possible. Which is ideal and frankly, people know it's coming because of that article that Erica Moser wrote a week or so ago in the day. So you know, people who read the day are aware of the issue. People who live in knowing are we're urging them to get on that email list so they, you know, get a copy of the thing when it comes out. They've had about a week to do that. So, and we have been getting, getting a lot of people that have contacted to get on. So that worked. But yeah, I mean, unless somebody really well votes to have something in the day, I would say I'd follow John's advice on that and, and not do that.
Rick?
Dana?
Dana Oviat. Is this the time to bring up whether or not the, the public information meeting could possibly be held non-Zoom that is in the real world or not?
I'm going to talk about that in a little bit on, on my list of things to talk with you about. Which is largely more on, well, we can talk about it here. I mean, there's two options to, and I've been, today I was running around trying to secure a bigger room than the firehouse in the event the governor changes the rules and allows us to have an in-person meeting that doesn't require social distancing. The firehouse is just not big enough. If we have to stay six feet apart from anybody else, you'd get about a dozen people in there, either room. The annex up at the town, the town hall annex up at the top of Ford Hill Road is bigger. I, I have that for June 2nd. I don't have it for June 1st or June 3rd. And one of the other things we need to talk about is whether we have just one night or whether we have one night plus a spillover night in the event there are more people that want to talk than we can handle in one night. So let's take that now and because it's, it's a question, I mean, it's eighth on my list, Zoom or live or a hybrid. Which is the other choice. Allow people that want to participate by Zoom to do it, but if we can have in person in a large enough room, do that as well. Just I don't know if we're going to be allowed to be and I expect, my hope is to if we pick a date for the meeting that's in early June, my view is we have to get that notice out by the end of this week to give the public enough time to read the document, develop their own comments, whether they're going to be orally presented or written. You don't want to hit them with something four days before meeting and say, you know, comment in three days. That's not fair to them. So on Zoom or live, if we can do live, what's your pleasure? Yep.
Nip Tanner, Rick, what I've heard and I think read is that the governor has said that he's lifting the majority of restrictions as of the 19th of this month. Have you seen any detail that would say that after that lifting, we still have to do socially distance for a large meeting indoors?
No, I haven't. And majority of the, of the limits is the kicker because I don't know when he says you can have meetings indoor, I don't know if he's going to say, but you have to still socially distance. I have not read anything one way or another on that. So I think it's possible we're going to go inside and it's not yet known whether we're going to have constraints. I suspect they're going to keep people still in masks because.
Nip Tanner, why don't we deal with that once we get clarity? Because I would strongly favor doing it in person indoors in as big a space as we need to comply with the rules. Gym at high school would I would assume be big enough.
So you're, are you saying we shouldn't set a meeting date and plan on doing it by Zoom? We should postpone until we know what the rules are and depending on what we have to do, then go find a room that's big enough for our crowd. Of course, we don't know what big the crowd will be. See, if they say indoors without social distancing, we could probably do this at the firehouse in the basement. That's where we had the three meetings in 2019. If there's spillover and people can't get in, that's why I favor having a fallback night, the second night of two. Where we just tell people, I'm sorry, we couldn't let you in. We're going to be back here tomorrow night. Have it all set up in advance for the Zoom stuff if we can do a hybrid. But if it's just in person, then we just say, come back tomorrow night. See, there's a value to Zoom that we hadn't appreciated before this pandemic era. People who live far away but own property in knowing, that's probably an advantage to them to do it by Zoom. And this is one of those cases where, let's say they show up for the first night, but they drove here from New York and they didn't plan on staying for two days, but they can't get into the room. Zoom lets them do it from their living room. That's an advantage to the public. All things considered, in person would be better. You, you get a better sense of, you know, people's temperature prone con. But Zoom has its advantages too. We've never done a hybrid meeting. Larry tells me the town has done it and it's worked pretty well for them. And apparently up at the town hall annex, they have some camera, he thinks they have some cameras set up that they're already set to to do that sort of thing.
Yeah, that, they told me the funding was there and that was the plan. I didn't go back to verify that it's been executed. But I think the point is that even if the governor says, yeah, you can, which we don't know the conditions or when, there are still going to be some residents that say that's nice, but I'm not comfortable in going to a public meeting yet, right? So I think that a hybrid one would be the best approach. Assuming it's possible. And in order to keep this thing progressing, if we announce it as a Zoom meeting and put in the caveat that says if we're able to hold it, you know, in person, subject to whatever rules are established, we will do that, but there will, there will still be a Zoom option for those that are, you know, not comfortable coming to the to the session. So I, I, you know, I, I think that that might be a way, a practical way to get, to get to move forward and to get both things done. And you're right, at that, at that point, it's not a question of allowing people in the, in the hall, but only that there's enough time for everyone to speak. That would then, the, the next day option would be to allow people to speak that didn't have a chance, not that they couldn't get access, if you will. But that would be my recommendation is to verify we can use the town facilities for a hybrid session. And then await the governor's rulings on, you know, what we would have to do in order to make sure that happens.
Verify that we can use the annex for hybrid meeting and then wait for governor gov's rules, which are next week.
No, that's not what I said. What I said was is that we would go forward with an announcement that we would do a Zoom meeting and if allowed on that date, if the rules have changed by that day, because it could change two days before then, I don't know, right? Or two days after that date. That if that's the case, then we will, you know, we'll work to hold that in person if we can.
Okay. All right. Other comments? Beth or Lynn?
I, I think what Larry proposes sounds like a good idea.
Okay. Big disagreement with that. Okay, we'll, we'll proceed that way then. All right. Okay, that's the Zoom issue. Anything else on that first page?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. One, one more comment is that there's Zoom and there's Zoom. So there was some discussion of is it a webinar which we don't have a license for? We only have a pro license for up to 50 folks. Or is it potentially possible to leverage the town's license, which would be a webinar approach? And there wouldn't be a limit of 50. So, you know, since we're talking about Zoom, I figured I'd throw that on the table as well.
Boy, we're going to be asking the town to okay.
I love, they may say no, I don't know. I'm just, I'm just throwing it out there as, as a, as a question.
Okay, well, it's something I can pursue with contact I made today, so.
Okay, so you're gonna, you're gonna handle that. It's either webinar or expand our license for one month to the, to the hundred. Okay.
Now, we have a hundred now, we would expand it for more, wouldn't it be?
No, we got 50 now.
Oh, we have 50 now, we're expanding license to 100.
To 100.
Okay. All right. All right. All right. Other comments on page one? Let's talk about this ideally one night, but pre-schedule a second night just in case. How do you feel about that? I don't want to be in a position of cutting people off if, if 50 people want to talk and we have time for 40.
Rick?
Dana?
Dana, Dana Oviat, I think it's a good idea.
Okay.
Larry Dunn, I agree.
Any disagreement with that?
I don't disagree, Beth Steele. I just, but the rule has to be, everybody just gets one bite of the apple.
Okay, so no, if time permits, people can come up and speak twice. But we one bite of apple. Okay. All right. Disagreement with what you've heard. Nip?
Nip Tanner, as I recall at the Ford's hearing, which is the last thing that I remember that was remotely like this, we asked people to also provide their comments in writing at that time. So we then had documents that we could review later without having to wash six hours of tape to recall what people said.
Okay, we can ask them to do that. We can't mandate it, I don't think.
I am suggesting we ask them to do that.
Okay. You'll see when we get to page, well, actually, yeah, when we get to page two, there's a, a certain structure to propose when we do that. But yours is in addition, ask, ask speakers to also submit written comments.
What we did at the, Nip Tanner, again, at the, with the Ford's hearing, each of those documents was labeled and entered as exhibit 75 or whatever. So that, yeah, we wanted to go back and look at it. We had a way to identify what was what.
Okay, so you want them to submit their comments in writing on the night of the public meeting, not subsequently? Is that right?
It'll, it'll be a lot easier for us to keep track of what's going on if we do that. And that's typically what's done. The process that we use at Ford's is what John Casey told us to do.
Yeah, I understand. There, there are specific rules for a legal public hearing. This one, we were leaning towards being a little more informal. I don't disagree with what you're saying. I'm just I'm trying to figure it out sequentially. If if we get a, a meeting announcement out at the end of this week that says we're going to have a meeting in early June, you get to comment for three minutes. But if you have more comments, or even if you don't have more comments, we also encourage you to submit them in writing. So the commission has a copy of them that they can refer to. I mean, it's the advantage of the speaker too. And if they want to say more than they could say in three minutes, they have the opportunity to do it in writing. All right, so ask speakers to also submit their comments in writing on the night of the meeting. Is that, is that the concept?
That's my recommendation.
Yeah, okay, I just want to make sure I have it correctly for this thing.
Of course, not everyone will or could be expected to do that because some people who maybe even didn't plan to speak could be. Plan to speak could be. You know, could speak and comment on something that's already been said by another speaker. So understandably.
That was Lynn Marshall, and you're basically saying some people may be most comfortable just getting up and speaking.
Yeah, or, or, or they may, they may not have prepared their comments ahead of time because this is a. You know, trick particularly, this is an informal meeting and they may respond to what another speaker said and. You know, some of that back and forth, if there's time for it, is really valuable.
All right.
As long as it doesn't get redundant over and over.
Well, even, even if it does, I mean. To give the public their fair opportunity, they may open up the bit to comment for a year or more. I'm, I'm. I'm kind of sensitive to let people talk as long as they want, but you can't really do that because somebody will take an hour and. Forty other people in the audience won't get a chance, which is why you have to put a limit on it. So I, I kind of, I would not want to clamp down on somebody who. Repeating what they heard three comments before. Just because they have a right to get up and take their three minutes to tell us what they think.
No, that, that isn't what I meant. I meant if something came up, like an issue came up and there was back and forth. Discussion or argument, that can be really, really valuable. That, that's not planned ahead of time.
Okay, there, there won't be back and forth argument between speakers. There can be sequential comments. I agree with you on that.
That's what I mean.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Anybody else on the issue of, well, we were on one night or two and we got a little sidetracked with the written comments, but that's appropriate. More comments on the one night or two part of the issue?
Now, I would just say in light of everyone getting a chance to speak. At least once. And, you know, if they have more to say, hopefully twice, that you, you've either got to have it on two nights. Or else you have to have it on one night and let it roll until people are done and that can get really late. So. And then a lot of people get tired and give up or, and the commission gets cross-eyed, so not listening as well. And then, and then some people have to go to work early the next day. So I think the two nights is, is much, much better idea than letting it just roll as late.
Okay.
Takes.
Yeah, limit the time on the first night and go with the second one if you need to. That's kind of what you're saying. Okay. All right. Any disagreement with that? We'll do one night with an, an audit or a. A scheduled fallback if we need it for the second night. I don't see any hands, so we'll do that. Okay. Okay. Look at item seven on that first page. Those are the things I intend to send out. With the meeting announcement, the agenda, which is the meeting announcement. Explanation with commission's intent, that will be the document I sent out last week, just for those new people who are on the list, you know, it doesn't cost anything to put or attach to an email. The rules of engagement, which we have to talk about next, that's the next page of this. And the proposal itself, again, it doesn't cost us anything to. To add it as an attachment and it's more convenient for the public to just see it as an attachment than. To hit a link and go to the OneDrive and see it. As it's formatted on the OneDrive, that's, that's a little more clunky. So. My intention would be to add, put those four things in the next mailing where whenever that goes out. I see nobody raising their hand on this, so we'll do that. This number nine came up. A few times in our discussions to be most effective. I intend to, to put in the point that you'll be most effective if you. Say something like, we see what you're trying to accomplish on this point. If you do it the other, another way. It'd be more effective or it would be more to our satisfaction as opposed to what you're proposing. Those are the kind of comments that would be most effective. I think Lynn had. Well, I, I won't say who because I can't remember frankly, but I, I think that was the kind of comment that generated putting it in here. Any disagreement with adding that concept in there? Okay, don't see any. All right, then Larry, would you scroll up to number two? What, Nip?
On, on point number 10. The way it's written makes me a little nervous. The implication could be that we're going to review every comment we receive. I would suggest it would be better worded to say, hold commission meetings to review the proposal. In light of the comments received.
Say that again, hold commission meetings to review.
The proposal. In, in light of the comments received. Way it's currently worded could imply that we are, as a commission, going to review every comment. I, for one, do not have much appetite for that.
Yeah, well, my intent was what you just described as your suggestion, so I, I'm totally okay with changing the words. It was not my intention that we go sequentially through every comment received. The commission has a right to. Ponder everything they hear and decide which ones they want to embrace and include, or they may get to the end of the. The day and say, I didn't hear anything that changed my mind. And that's the commission's right to, to do that. So. I'm okay with your suggested change in wording. Is anybody else disagree? I see no hands waving, so I'll change the words for, to number 10, the way Nip described them. Okay, up to the rules of engagement. Right, I've added or adjusted a few things, which I will read here as we go. I, I did not put a revised document up because it was less than the governor's 24-hour limit on. Documents up. So this is a document that's been up since late last week. One suggestion is in 3A. Put a time limit on, they must email knowing fire district zoning by 5:00 PM on the day before the meeting date. So that we're not getting. Late entries at. Five o'clock on the day of the meeting and Sue's tearing her hair out because she can't, you know, manage them. In fact, I might even make that on two days before the meeting. Simply because there will be a little bit of logistics in having phone numbers for the people who may call in to comment. We're requiring the legal residence address, or if they're a property owner, the address of the knowing property that they own. And then also the speaker's phone number. And again, that's to identify speakers who call in by phone. So I think having a limited day or two in advance of the meeting is a good idea. Not taking a lot of effort for the public to do this, but it keeps us from going crazy. Dealing with last minute people. If they know in advance, they have to do it two days in advance, then that's their deadline. Beth, I saw your hand.
Still, I mean, that's fine with me, but if we do that, do we need F?
Do we need what?
Letter F, saying you can submit them afterwards, kind of defeats the purpose of what you're saying.
No, not really. The, the deadline thing I just talked about is for the verbal, the speakers.
Oh, I thought that was for the comments that.
No, no, speakers. I don't know if I can comment, there's in there, those wishing to speak must email and identify residence or property owned. And I've also added phone number, but the speakers would be. Two days before the meeting, five o'clock, two days before the meeting. Down below an F, that's for written comments.
Right, I mean, would, would, I thought, kind of based on what we had discussed a little earlier. That maybe tabulating and compiling these written comments might be the most difficult for Sue, because I assume there's going to be a lot of them. Maybe there should be a limit, how many days before the meeting those are submitted as well. She can do.
That's what I was trying to capture with F, maybe the dates are not good.
But F talks about any submitted after the meeting, I mean. Are we just saying submit them whenever? Because you're about.
Yeah, I see your point. I, I put the five days after the meeting in because I'm presuming there could be people who sit quietly. Listen to everything they heard and then formulate a view and they want us to have their view, but I didn't want it to be open-ended.
Okay, point well taken. I get that.
Well, since we got into F, let's, let's talk about that for a minute and we can go back to A. Anybody have different views on what's written and, and the days? In F, those limits. Nip?
Nip Tanner. Based on comments at prior meetings. My understanding is, and correct me if I'm wrong, that all of the written. Comments that we've received up until now. Are put aside and are not to be considered. Within the framework of this. Public input meeting, that the. Public input meeting. Input will consist only of what is said at that meeting, submitted at that meeting. Or submitted in the timeframe that you've outlined in F here. And that we as commissioners don't need to maintain. All the other stuff as well. That are the body of what we need to. Pay attention to in the framework of this public input. Meeting is what you've, you're laying out here in section three. Is that correct?
Well. It's correct as to the intent of what I intended with F, but frankly. It's our choice if we would like to include. All of the comments we received. They basically started coming in in batches on April 1st. So it only goes back a, you know, a month and a half. Frankly, we probably ought to, if we don't. Accept the notion that we can consider any of those earlier comments as well. John's point is there's no legal requirement to, because we don't have a legal proposal on the table yet. So we can, can, we can include them if we want. We can also tell them. If you would like the comments you submitted earlier to be considered, resubmit them. I mean, if that's what you want to do. Beth?
Still, but I mean, at every meeting, we've been saying, if you want to submit a comment. Submit it in writing. So they do, and now we're going to say they don't matter. I mean, I think that applies in the face of what we're saying. So I think we should accept those as well. They should be part of the record because otherwise, why should people have to resubmit them? It just. Doesn't seem right. Given what we've already told the public time and time again at every single meeting. Submit your comment in writing.
So. Any comment? Well, any comment, how far back? I mean, I tried to put boundaries on this to. So that we'd have something coherent to look at because you could go back to. 2019 comments too.
I guess, what, what exactly is, what was your thought as to? The written comments that we receive. Obviously, they're going to be forwarded to us and then. What, I mean, are we going to get a binder of all of them? What, what, what was the thought process that you had with respect to what? Or how we would go through them?
If they come in electronically, they're going to get forwarded to you in a batch, just like Sue does the correspondence that we receive each week. You get an email at the end of the week that has. You know, three to 20 documents. Well, we never had 20 in one week, but. You know, we PDF all of those comments. Put them in their own document, attach all the documents to an email and send it out to you. The written comments we receive, I would expect we would do the same thing. F was intended to put some sideboards on it, so it wasn't so open-ended. But the ones we've already received, I don't mind including those because it's, it's kind of awkward to tell people, okay. In April, you sent us a comment letter, but you have to resubmit it to us again.
Right.
To do that, you already have copies of all of those because we've forwarded them out as PDF documents. For you to, to read. So. You could just go ahead and read all of those to your heart's content and you have everything leading up to this period. This period now is. For people who want to submit comments. Based on the informal public input meeting we're going to have. So. You're saying you don't mind including everything we got since April 1st? There was a big gap between the last comment we got before April 1st and April 1st. Right on that time, we started getting a bunch of them. We're still getting them. So we could say any comments received. This year in 2021 will automatically be part of what the commission reviews. In the context of looking at the proposal and the comments that we've received. We could do it that way.
I just feel like they have to be included because otherwise it's like false advertising. Tell them to write the letter and then you're saying, it doesn't really matter. You got to submit something else or submit it again. And they already wrote their letter and put a lot of thought into it.
Okay, so I'll say any comment received since January 2021. Will automatically be included for the record. Everybody okay with that? Larry?
Yeah, no, I'm okay with that. I think there's two parts to this. One is that, which is prior thing submitted, so I, I agree with that. But I, I thought number F or letter F was. As we go into the formal commission meetings to deliberate on changes, if any, to the proposal. We would only. Utilize written input. X days before that meeting. So I think that's really the issue. We don't want to be getting stuff in. You know, the day before, you know, that, that deliberation occurs. Right, that's why I thought, I think there's.
F and G are going to both take a little bit of rewriting. Because both of them suggest that. The ones Beth is concerned about that came in from the beginning of April through. That 14 days prior to the meeting, those should automatically be included and that's not what this is now, but it can. We just need to make that change and, and I'm open to that. It's easier on the public because they've already done it once. They don't have to send it again. We've already distributed the ones that have been received up through last Friday, so you have all of those anyway. And. You know, you're free to read them or not read them frankly. I mean, nobody's putting a gun to your head to have to read it and it's. But I suspect you all read them just like I do because you want to see what the public sentiment is. So we've already gotten all the earlier ones. The way this, I think I'd rewrite this is. To just take out reference to the 14 days and then. You know, do something with G that basically says the front end of this, the important days, anything we get less than three days before the meeting, commissioners aren't going to see. They'll, they'll see them afterwards because logistically, we, if we get a flood of things two days before the meeting. You can't read them all and we can't even process them all because it does take a little bit of labor to. Convert emails and their attachments into a form that is easily then transmitted to you. So we need that three days to. For the logistics of it.
Rick?
Dana?
Dana will be it. I think I, I agree with Beth because I think what she was intimating was that perhaps we're saying to the public that we're only. was that perhaps we're saying to the public that we're only going to consider their written comments during this period and nothing else counts. But I, I don't think that's what we're saying, and perhaps we should make that more clear. And the other point I want to make is, there have been some great letters, I'm just looking at my three-ring binder here, that have been written well before January 2021. That's it.
Well, you got them all. I mean, because everything we've received, we have forwarded. My question would be, when you sit down after this informal public input session, how far back do you want to go in reviewing documents that were submitted to us? Principally because the proposal changed dramatically in late fall into the winter. We hadn't even made a lot of decisions yet. We were getting letters that were good letters in general or concerns. But as Nip said in his earlier comment, we should be reviewing our proposal and looking at the comments we received relative to our proposal. Not going through each comment we've ever received and reviewing the comment as its own entity. So, you know, you need to decide what you want to do. I mean, if, if you want to go back to the earliest time we received lots of comments on this, you'll be back to the summer of 2019 and I don't think you want to go back that far. So the question is, how far back do you go? The, the way out of what appears to be becoming a dilemma is go back to what I just said here. Set a start date and an end date for purposes of this public information meeting and tell people that if you want to comment on this proposal in this public input, input meeting, you can submit something 14 days before, or you can submit it up to five days after. But that's what we're going to review for the record. Otherwise, we'll be chasing letters from October of 2020. It's to try and put some coherence on this, so we have something that we know what the boundaries are that we're going to, to review. And that's not to say the earlier letters we got weren't great letters. You know, I can remember most of them, because I go back and read them from time to time. It's just, logistically, how are we gonna? What are we going to call the record for this informal meeting? Because when we get to the, the formal one, the legal one, none of what we're talking about matters. Because the record will be what's submitted in, once we announce the public hearing, anything comes in after that, that's the record. There is no going back two years or six months or two months before the meeting announcement. It'll be based on the legality of we have announced this proposal and you comment after that date. So that one will be easy logistically. This one, we can make it easier or we can make it more complicated. Beth, where, yeah, sorry, yeah.
Beth Steel. So why don't we just say written comments may be submitted up to five days after the meeting, period. And that, that's all we need to say. They want to submit them before, obviously. Clearly, they can. That sentence would let them know that they can submit them before. They can submit them up to five days after and just leave it at that. And then as commission members, we're not saying what you submitted before that doesn't matter. It's just saying, you know, if you want to submit something, it has to be by five days after, period. So I think all this language get, just gets a little confusing about what the rules are. And it really just needs to be simple.
Okay, that would get rid of the 14-day thing and that would be beneficial. I'm all for simplicity. I don't want the public to think that if they submit something the morning of the meeting in writing, that they have any expectation that we're going to have read it, read it. Because we'll be juggling with all the balls in the air and they are all on fire at that point, trying to get the meeting to go off properly. And you guys will be preparing and doing what you do. I'm not going to have Sue forward 20 letters that came in 12 hours before the meeting. So I think we need to be fair with the public and say, you know, get your letters in three days or more prior to the meeting, if you want commissioners to have the benefit of them at the night of the meeting.
Okay, but I mean, the whole point of this is, the whole point of the meeting is in, I thought it was, is to hear the public and to hear their comments.
Yeah.
And then at a later meeting, we were going to digest them and discuss them. So if somebody submits a letter five days after the hearing, but obviously before our next meeting, whenever we get together again to discuss, we'll have, you know, we're not going to have debate on that particular night. The debate's not going to happen until later. That's just my thought. I know Nip had his hand up and he probably has.
I know, but I want to make sure I capture what you're saying. So we could take out the 14 days before the meeting part.
I think so.
I'm suggesting we should leave in the three-day part, just so they know they're gonna, their letter is not going to be read before the meeting. Are you saying you want to take that out too?
Yes. And the reason being is, I think that sends a message like, oh, you have to resubmit something if you've already submitted it. And again, I think a lot of people have already submitted letters that we have read and will consider. I just don't want to see a regurgitation of letters that we've already received, receiving them again. I mean, if they've sent them up to this point, we have them and, and they will be considered. I just think the way that it's worded leads, might lead some to believe that you got to resubmit it again. When you don't.
Well, that part I can agree with you. You know, I, I can't make the words up on, on the spot, but you, there is no need to resubmit something you've sent in recently. The part of the, the part of this thing that says comments have been less than three days. I want the public to understand that if they want us to have the benefit of their written comment, because they may not come and speak. They may just send us a three-page email. If they want us to consider those thoughts leading up to the meeting, they need to know they got to get them in three days before. That's the only reason for that.
But what meeting are we talking about? We're talking about.
The informal public input.
The informal public, whatever. Yeah. I mean, again, we're not considering in the sense that on, on that date, we're, we're taking in information. But we're not having a, a discussion where we're considering what people have said to us and debating it. That's going to come at a later session, right? Because there's not going to be any time for that, that night. There's going to be so many people.
Yeah, we're not going to, we're not going to have a meeting that night to discuss anything.
Right. So there's nothing that's going to be quote unquote considered in the sense of let's talk about the points. We're going to, it's an informational meeting where we're going to be taking information. I don't know. I, that's how I see it. I, it doesn't really, I don't, I'm, I think I'm unfortunately just making this point go on and on and on when it really doesn't need to. I, however you want to word it is fine with me. I just want people to know that whatever they've submitted to this point is going to be considered. They don't have to resubmit it, because we do have it. And we are going to review it when we get together for our, our discussion.
Yep. Okay. Wait a minute. Nick was next. Let me get, I don't see him on the screen yet. There he is. Okay, Nip?
Nip Tanner. Rick, is the proposal out in public?
Yeah, it has been, because it's been on the OneDrive and linked by the agendas for every one of our meetings for back several weeks, if not a couple of months. And as people read the email last week and they've emailed in and said, can I get a copy of it? We've either given them the link or we just attached the document and send it out, because it is a public document. Once we put it on the OneDrive.
It is a public document.
Yes.
And in the framework that you've, you're attempting to establish in terms of the comments when people speak for three minutes, that I think it would be helpful that if we're going to ask for written comments, either documenting what people say at the meeting or outside of the meeting, that they follow the same framework, that they, they take the proposal and make specific suggestions on how to improve it. Not just the blanket comments that I saw in the early number of submissions, which were, you know, you don't have a right to do this, you're taking property without due process, blah, 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 blah. We, I, I think we need, if, if, if this is going to be at all a helpful exercise, there needs to be some structure to it. I personally like your idea of F, that we want people to, to once officially the document is out there for comment, people then have two weeks to submit comments. The comments should be specific, not broadcast, this is a terrible idea. Or, you know, we should not allow any short-term rentals, et cetera. But we want very specific comments to help us take the proposal that we've spent all this time creating and go through it with their comment, targeted comments, and figure out what changes, if any, members want to make. I think wide open. Personally, I don't have a lot of appetite to read a lot of broadcast ultimate comments. I am interested in specific, useful, helpful comments, but not, you know, shotguns.
Okay. D, if you look up at D, that's what that's intended to do. I can strengthen that if you like. Proposal to receipt revised specific measures with reasons why and how the revision will meet the commission's goals will be most effective.
Right.
That's the point you're trying to make. I don't disagree with you that it will be hard to to listen to a whole bunch of comments of people that say, don't do this. I don't like the idea. But you got to give the public the opportunity. They may not be very effective if they say that. And that's kind of what I tried to say in item D. But if they're going to get up and say, we hate this, don't do it, we got to listen. You know, they got three minutes to tell us they don't like it. That's why past meetings, we've talked, you know, without data to support it, but it's likely 90 to 95% of the comments we receive are going to be that very comment. Don't do this. Although, given the trend in the letters, you know, we may be surprised. We may get a fair number of people that say, do it, or you're not going far enough. I mean, you know, that's why we're going to the informal meeting to I don't want to put that sideboard on people unless I'm outvoted. Because you got three minutes to tell us what you think. You will be most effective if you comment on this proposals, tell us what to improve or do differently. But if they want to tell us they don't like it, I don't know if we can stop them. Before I go, go to you, Lynn, I was intrigued. Now we have a point, counterpoint on that F. About the 14 days prior to the meeting. I mean, we heard Beth, we heard Nip, others. I, I don't have a dog in the fight so much. I was trying to structure it so that, you know, we constrain the comments coming in, but I think Beth makes a good point. Don't make them, resubmit them. And I think we can say that. But I need to know which way you want to go on this.
Rick?
Dana. Lynn, Lynn was first. She had her hand up. Lynn?
I, I'm going back to A, so if you have something that's still on this, let's finish that up.
Let's try and close the door on F first. Dana?
Dana Oviet. I, I completely understand what Beth is trying to say. And I think she'd probably be satisfied by just taking the first sentence out. Am I right, Beth?
Yeah, you are. Thank you.
Okay, that was a good suggestion. Omit first sentence of F. Beth agrees. Okay, any disagreement with that? Nip? Yep?
I like it for the way it's written, for the reasons I stated.
Okay, is there a motion on whether to omit sentence one or to leave F as it is? Whoever wants to make the motion can do it.
Dana Oviet, I think Beth should go for it.
I mean, I honestly, it's not that big a deal to me. If it means a lot to Nip, then I'm fine with keeping that in there. I just, I just want these people to know what they've submitted previously will be considered. That's all. Because I intend to consider them.
Well, okay, here's, here maybe this can accommodate both of you. I'll put something in that says you don't have to resubmit. Let me write this down, because I'm flying by the seat of my pants here. Don't have to resubmit comments. But we'll leave that sentence in, because it doesn't really talk about things we heard earlier. It says, written comments submitted from 14 days prior to the meeting till three days prior will be distributed prior to the meeting, which is okay. You'll get those, whether you read them after the meeting or before the meeting is your business. What will require change is G. Because that'll have to be changed to say anything we've received in 2021 on this subject is available for consideration by the commission. Does that sound good?
Yeah, that's fine.
Yep?
Rick, what's, what's the logic for saying anything received in 2021? I mean, I, I would think, you know, that's the reason I asked, when the document that we're going to be taking to the workshop for the, excuse me, the public input meeting was publicly available. I would think that the input we've received since whatever that, since whatever that date was, could logically be said to be part of the record of the informal public meeting. But if you just arbitrarily.
It is arbitrary. I don't want to go back to 2019. We could, there was a big gap between January and April 1st, where we, I don't think we got any comments on this. So we could say comments received since April 1st.
I'm good with that.
Beth, you okay with that?
Yes.
Okay, since April 1st, will be considered. Okay, and they don't have to resubmit. Okay. Now, Lynn?
Yes, on A, you know, when I go to a Town of Groton meeting, I just sign up with my name and my address. And nobody's checking it or anything. I can just sign up. Whereas this, there's this, apparently this, you've submitted a couple of days ahead of time, so that we can check to see if you're a Noink resident. But I don't think there's an easy way to check to see whether all people are Noink residents. For example, if there's young adults living with their parents, often give valuable input they have in the past to us. And they're not going to show up as a, as an owner of the parent's house. People in the military who may be renting a house, they're not property owners, but they are Noink residents. They wouldn't show up on, necessarily on a driver's license.
Let me interrupt you, Lynn.
From that, from another state, they're allowed to do that in military.
It, it's not the intent of A, for us to check up on people. What we're trying to do is focus people on the fact that we're going to listen to residents and property owners. We decided that at a previous meeting. So we need to say residents and property owners email in to sign up. The reason we need two days before the meeting is because I expect to get a flood of these things and Sue's going to have to make up a list of email addresses and phone numbers. Because the email addresses are, if you're on video. Because the email addresses are, if you're on video, on the phone number, you won't have a, an email address. And if somebody wants to speak by phone, we have to have the phone number of that person. We're, in two days, we're not going to check up on anybody. We want people to know, we want residents and property owners to be the ones to comment. If somebody wants to cheat on that, you know, what are you going to do? You, you, we're not going to go chasing them down in that respect.
I'm sorry.
The intent.
Yeah. And then, and then it also then takes away, if, if they can't speak, unless you have this information ahead of time, then they're not able to respond spontaneously to something that's happening at the meeting. And I, I don't think that's right.
I'm not sure I follow that point.
Well, if I, if I'm not planning to speak, I might not sign up. But then, here's some points at the meeting, I think, you know, they really got that wrong. Or I think that's a good idea, but it'd be better if you modified it this way. You know, there are all kinds of ideas that people have at the meeting based on what they're hearing. But if they haven't already signed up to speak, which they may not, because they weren't planning on it ahead of time. They don't have anything written, they don't have a, you know, a set thing they're going to say. It emerges from the meeting, then they're, they're silenced because they didn't sign up two days or more ahead of time?
Two points, we have to have a signup list if it's a Zoom meeting, because we, you need to know who we're going to basically say, okay, it's your time. You can't see somebody in an audience raising their hand. So you're going to have to have a signup list if it's a Zoom meeting. Read what Larry has highlighted here.
Okay.
Is that okay with you?
Right, so I guess that with the fact that we can't, if it's, if it's all Zoom, we won't be able to see them, then yeah, how do you know that somebody wants to speak, so that will have to be.
To sign up. Okay, this, you, you got this last week, so I'm just wanting to make sure everybody's seen it. Okay. So, since we went back to A, let's start there. We had agreed in the past it would be residents and property owners would be our intent for speakers. I want to add the phone number in for the reason I described. Is there any disagreement with that? We're simply telling people, when you email us, also give us your phone number. That way, if they sign on and they're not on video, we know who to, who the next speaker is, because we'll have their phone number and we'll unmute them by looking for that phone number. Okay? All right. There was a comment back in the past three minutes, or just let people be unlimited. I think earlier in this meeting, I, I gave the reason for the three minutes, just so everybody gets some opportunity. Is there any, just, any, any view on that? It's one of the questions I had to ask you all. I don't see hands wave, I'll just figure it's three minutes.
Oh, okay.
Okay. All right. Had a question on the attorney option. I think we discussed this at the last meeting. The idea was if somebody wanted to have their attorney speak, let's say for a group of citizens, they could do that up to five times three minutes, so the attorney could have fifteen minutes. But he or she would have to identify those five, and they would not also get the opportunity to speak. Just so there wasn't, you know, double dipping in, in the comments, so that other people had a fair opportunity to speak. The reason I thought that was a good idea is to the point that we want to get comments on the proposal that may be effective in suggesting a revision that would be, still meet our goals, but be more satisfactory to somebody who's not satisfied now. I think it's more likely, it's, could be more likely that we would get more effective comments out of a a representative who doesn't have a dog in the fight than someone who's frankly emotional about it. So I thought it was an opportunity for us to, to maybe get some more effective comments. But, you know, I'm open to suggestion on it. Any views on that? Yep, and then Larry.
Nip Tanner, I think it's a worthy hope, Rick, based on the Ford's hearing. I, I'd be surprised if the input from the attorneys helps us to craft a better proposal. I think they're typically, they're hired to object to what we're doing. And they tend to spend their time framing their objections as legally as possible. But, yeah, we'll see what happens, but I'm not optimistic that we're going to get a couple hints on how to do a better job.
Okay, that's a fair point. Other comments on that? Dana, I'm sorry, Larry first, then Dana.
Yeah, I, I mean, that makes a good point, but I think in order to make this work, when they submit their request, if the, if the representative submits the request, they need to say whoever they are, plus the clients they're representing, so that we can track this particular item.
Say that again, so I get it right?
So we asked at the beginning that you have to submit it, you know, number A.
Yeah.
So if a representative, what they need to do for number A is to say, you know, I'm attorney X, and I represent A, B, C, and D of these addresses, just so that we can enforce that which you're suggesting, that's all.
That's, that's what C does. Maybe not clear enough.
Yeah, it doesn't say how you submit your request for time.
Well.
To me, it didn't, but.
If a representative wants to speak for more than three minutes, they can do so for three minutes per client, up to fifteen minutes, but must be, the clients must be identified.
Just saying, on the submission, on the request for time upfront, they need to put that information there. Versus doing it, we don't, what we don't want to do is try and do it on the fly, that's all I'm saying during.
I see what you're saying, no, in the initial request for fifteen minutes, they have to identify them. So we know not to put up the others on the speaker list.
There you go, that, that was, that's the clarification I was looking for.
Okay. All right, everybody agree with that? Oh, I'm sorry, I had Dana after Larry.
Rick, you said it might be good if somebody spoke who didn't have any dog in the fight. But in fact, to Nip's point, these attorneys will have been hired by one side or the other, or a third side. So I'm not sure that it's, you know, it, it, this isn't the actual public hearing. There's nothing being litigated here. This is, it's no longer being called a workshop, it's could be calling, it's being called an informational meeting. So I, I'm not sure what the, the purpose of having an attorney speak instead of the actual person who lives in Noank at this point. And my only other comment is if you, if, if we're going to insist that attorneys be allowed to speak, that there'd be no double dipping, that is, if the attorney represents five people, that those five people, in fact, don't have the right to speak at the end of the meeting, if there is enough time, as, as you, as we put in C.
Okay, two questions. Counsel advises that it's a good idea to allow attorneys representing clients to speak. It, it's a very rare event that we would say, no, you can't do it. That's why I have the option in there. On the, what you call double dipping, you're saying that no matter what, you would not want to let them speak. But how about somebody who was just there on his own behalf, and he spoke once and time permits at the end? And you'd let another person speak twice, but you wouldn't let somebody represented by attorney speak once. Again, this is if time permits, and I doubt that's going to happen.
Yeah.
We can solve that by simply saying, everybody gets to speak once, nobody gets to speak twice. Because
I wouldn't be.
Heard people describe that that could be very unfair, because, you know, how come one person gets to speak twice? Because he, you know, somehow, I mean, how do we even pick the person to speak twice when it's a Zoom meeting? That needs to.
I get it, I get it, I get it, I get it, I trust you.
But I think, no, you, you're on to something, maybe just one. Everyone speaks once, no more. How's that sound to people?
No.
Very good.
Oh, okay, why not? Who is that, Nip said yes?
Yes.
No, it, it was Lynn, again, it's, it's like, this is, there's no, you know, in an informational meeting, I guess, I know it's not a workshop now. But again, people are not able to then, they have to have their comments prepared ahead of time, and they're not able to respond to things that have been said. And I, I just think that's a very valuable part of the meeting.
Lynn, it's, if it's not an in-person meeting, how are you going to do that by Zoom?
They cannot listen to what, you mean in terms of.
How does a person get to speak again after hearing something that he wants to raise his hand and comment on again? If it's a Zoom meeting, who do, who do you pick? How do you do that logistically?
Well, it. Hey, Rick, Larry, it, it's not any different than it is in person. You raise your hand, so you can virtually raise your hand. Or you got the chat function where you can put your name down there and, and do it. But I think any, anyone that's after the list is at the discretion of the chair. And I think you said that somewhere else, I think you just have, just add that to that particular item C, and I think you're covered.
I see this as being almost, now, this could be my naivete on Zoom meetings, but I see this as almost impossible to manage in a Zoom meeting if we're going to allow people to come back and comment again on something they heard earlier. If they want to submit a written comment within the five days after the meeting that says, I heard this guy say this, and I disagreed with it, and here's why, that seems more coherent. I, it could just be, I'm not conversant with Zoom enough, but we have not used chat features in our meetings for the last year, and we haven't used hand raised icons. And some of that stuff is going to be necessary, because this should be a big meeting, I suspect. Which is why the signup in advance is so important, because then we go looking for the name of the person on the screen or the phone number on the screen and say, okay, you're up. We unmute that person, they unmute themselves when we ask them to. They give their comments, and we go to the next person. How we then allow somebody to come up again and comment? I don't, I just don't know how you do that in a fair way, other than the meeting host being the one to decide that one gets to comment and this one doesn't. You know, that's why one comment per person and as many written comments as you want to submit may be more fair to the public. It's, I'm just guessing at that. And I'm always open to suggestion, and the will of the majority. So what is the will of the majority? Beth?
Make a motion that people are only allowed to speak once. For the reason that it's very unfair to allow some people to speak twice or more, and others not. One time is, that way it's across the board, fair to everyone.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Nip Tanner, discussion on the motion. I don't see any hands, whoops.
Dana's got his hand.
Yeah, I thought Larry, as I was turning, Dana.
Might this change if we have an in-person meeting?
It might. I mean, we haven't talked about the meeting date yet. I'm beginning to have concerns that we're not ready to pick a date, because there's just too much uncertainty as to how the meeting is, uh, logistically going to be run. There are real strong pros and cons for both approaches. Which is why when Larry says hybrid, which we've never done, that in the long run may be appropriate, but it hasn't been set up yet, so. But you're right, Dana, it, a lot of this, some of this becomes easier face to face. Some of it is, is not as good for the public or for us. And, you know, we could spend another meetings worth of time talking about the relative merits of both approaches. I'm going to make that note, though. A lot will depend on how the, what type of meeting.
As the motion bringer, I will just say that I intended my motion to be, whether it's Zoom or in person. Maybe somebody doesn't want, doesn't want to go along with my motion because of that, but that's my intent.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Okay, so the secondor agrees with the intent Zoom, and I'll add it to the motion. People only speak once per person, Zoom or in-person meeting. Okay, that's the motion, other comments on the motion? Seeing no hands, all those in favor, I'll call as a roll, Beth?
Aye.
Nip?
Aye.
Dana?
No.
Okay. Larry?
Aye.
I, and I'm an I, so that is four to one, motion passes. So each person will speak only once, whether it's a Zoom meeting or an in-person meeting. Okay. Two more issues I have. And I don't know. Just, as we've discussed, there's too many uncertainties here. Firehouse or the town annex, or as Nip said, maybe the high school auditorium. I think his turn, town was in his cheek when he said it, but I'm not so sure. If we have a hybrid or an in-person meeting opportunity, the rules of how we can run that meeting are going to be instrumental. So we need to keep in the back of our mind, as Dana just said, a lot will depend on Zoom or in-person. And that's a true statement. So I'd say we have to leave that aside for now. I will say, the only night I could get for the town hall annex was June second. Firehouse, we can get first, second, you know, third. I didn't check later dates. So we just keep that in the back of our mind. And now I'm, I kind of would like to get some suggestions. How we manage this as a Zoom meeting is going to be kind of important for two reasons, because the manager's going to have a tough road to hoe. And it's unfair for Larry to be the one to manage it, because then he can't really listen to comments and like he, he might otherwise be if he wasn't pulling all of the strings and flipping switches.
Rick, I, I'm sorry.
Suggestions on that, on what we think we might be able to do to relieve him of that, Dana?
I, I really think that we're moving forward too fast, and we're getting ourselves ahead of the ball. We don't know where. We don't know whether we're going to have a Zoom meeting. We don't, because we don't know whether we have the opportunity to have a public meeting. And I think, I think that we're all going to agree that a public meeting overall, for the benefit of the commission and the benefit of the public, when you look at everything, all things considered, is going to be better in public than it will be in Zoom. And so I'd like to, to make a motion that we don't make, we not make any decisions tonight until we can have an in-public meeting that will not be held over Zoom.
I have some information. Please, Nick Tanner.
Okay, let's see if we have a second for the motion first, to keep us ourselves in order. Is there a second to Dana's motion? I see no second, so motion dies for a second.
I'll second it.
Okay. Motion made by Dana Oviet, seconded by Nip Tanner. So no decisions until we can have an in-person meeting. Is that correct, Dana?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, that's the motion on the floor. Comments, Nip?
Yes, I'm reading from the Connecticut website. Effective Wednesday, May 19th. All remaining restrictions will be lifted, will be lifted. Except masks will continue to be required in all indoor public settings where social distancing is not possible. So as I understand that, and that, you know, could, could change, but the guidance that the state has put out is effective next Wednesday, that we could have an indoor meeting, just everybody would have to have a mask. People want to check it. I Googled Connecticut guidelines, anyway. Portal dot C T dot gov. Rules for reopen. And it goes back to the beginning when the restrictions were put in place and then scrolls through, through various states where they've been relaxed. And then the final one is effective next Wednesday. So it seems like, based on that, we can plan on an indoor meeting and not have social distancing, but ask everybody to wear a mask. Where did Rick go? Other people have Rick on their screen?
No.
We wore a mask.
I do not see Rick. So something, something happened there. I guess we need to pause until our chair is returned unless, unless Beth wants to take control.
I mean, I'll be honest, I, I, I guess we're discussing the motion right now. That's where we are. My, I'm happy to have it in person. That's fine with me, as long as everyone wears the mask. So I guess I would, I would be okay with the motion as stated. Lynn, what's your thought?
I think we're missing, yeah, I think we're missing one other thing. The town, the town may have an issue with in-person meetings, even if the state says they're not. So it's not a, a one and done thing. I just, I just don't know. Yeah. Oh, wait a minute. I just lost my connection. I just saw a note from Rick.
And we want to have a our information.
We want to stay tuned, is what he said.
Well, Lynn, you haven't talked on, on this point yet. What are your thoughts?
I just think if it was scheduled at the firehouse and it wasn't a Zoom meeting, then we could, we could move forward.
What do you think, Larry?
I, I still think that you have people that are remote owners. You have people that don't want to get into a closed environment regardless of what the guidance was. And there's still uncertainty on what the 19th meant or means in terms of what the town restrictions may or may not be, because it's their buildings. I mean, if it's other than the firehouse, it would be, you know, a town building and they would have say over whether we could hold a meeting or not.
Yeah.
So I just, I just think is that we, we've been doing this for what, three years? So I don't know.
Yeah, I, I hear what you're saying. And then I also think to myself, well, if COVID never hit, we would never have had a Zoom meeting like this. And our, this meeting that we're gonna have would be in-person and it just would be. I mean, I definitely don't want, if they're out of town owners, I definitely want to hear their views. I definitely want them to be able to speak. Um, I think the best, if we can do it in a hybrid fashion, I'm cool with that. I prefer it. If we can't, um, I, I do worry that the Zoom platform doesn't allow us to get the same feel, you know? But honestly, I, I could go either way. I'm not, I'm not really wedded to one way or the other. I know you know, Nip and Dana have stronger points on, views on that. So I guess if we don't have Rick, we can take a mo, you know, vote on the motion. There's any further discussion on it before we take the vote?
I'm, I'm not sure I'm comfortable taking a vote without, without Rick being here.
Okay.
I, I'm not sure what the protocol is or what Robert's Rules of Order has to say about this, especially in a Zoom situation. But I don't want to do anything where our vote could be questioned, say by Rick, who wasn't here afterwards.
Well, I'm willing to wait a few minutes, but I mean, it is now eight thirty-eight. So, you know, at nine o'clock, I'm signing off one way or the other. And I guess
Not an issue with Robert's Rules of Order. If somebody, if, if any member is not available, it defaults to the vice chair and she runs the meeting and you don't, and there's a quorum. So there's no, there's no issue with the vote taken. I understand your point. I actually agree with it, but there's not, it's not from a legal point of view. It's more from a Rick, Rick is in the middle of all this.
Yeah, me too. I agree. I mean, believe me, I'd rather have Rick running the meeting than myself, so, like, any day of the week.
What are we hearing from Rick?
Yeah, we, are we getting
He, he lost his, what I got is a note saying he lost his connection. He's trying to get back in. That's, that's what I got.
Phone? To log on?
Yeah, why don't we have a phone?
Well, he should, he can get on Zoom on his phone, so let me, let me suggest that.
I don't, there's only twenty minutes left.
I don't know if, I don't know if this is okay to just interject as a homeowner from knowing.
It's not. Sorry.
I just wanted to be able to participate.
Yeah, I'm sorry. This is, and I'm, I'm not trying to shut you down at all. I apologize. But this isn't a, a public meeting. This is, you're, the public's allowed to watch, but you're not allowed to comment tonight. And definitely we do want to hear your, your comments. So however it goes, and I don't know how they're gonna decide, but if for whatever reason they decide it's an in-person, you do have that opportunity to do it in a writing to make your, your thoughts known. I'm sorry. Anything, Larry? Okay, Larry's muted. You're muted, Larry.
Oh, did you pass the motion or?
Not, I got Rick on the phone. Can you hear Rick?
Yes. I was trying to take some, some charge here, but I'm happy to see it back to you, Rick, so.
All right, so Rick, you're, you're live. From the
No, I'm having big internet problems. It says I'm not connected, which never happens.
All right, well, there's a motion on the table. There's been discussion. People can hear you, so you can weigh in.
Oh. Okay, under Zoom rules, I can participate even though if I'm not there. Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Well, is there any more debate on the motion? I can't see a screen, so you'll have to tell me.
Raising his hand. He'd like to have discussion.
Yeah, I'm just gonna continue the discussion one more time. I have got the second go around. I, I got to
Hold on, let me, let me, hold on one All right, I gotta make sure that he can hear you. Okay. Dana, do another test. Test one, two, three.
Test one, two, three. Rick, can you hear me?
Guess not. Let me change, let me try one more thing here.
All right, try again.
Testing one, two, three. Rick, can you hear me?
Did you hear that, Rick?
No, I didn't.
Oh, darn.
I'm gonna have to go reboot my modem. Cause
All right, you, use your Zoom app on your phone.
All right, hold on a second.
All right.
All right, we'll have to hang up, so now I'll have to
Okay, yep.
Get on that way.
All right. All right, he's gonna, he's, he's having problems with his router, so he's gonna try again on his phone.
Can I just say one thing? Dana Oviet? Can anybody hear me?
Can hear you.
I don't think Larry can, though. No, he can't.
I'm sorry. I, I can hear you, but Beth is the, is the chair.
Yeah, I said I can hear you, so go ahead.
Okay, I, I will. In addition to my other comments, this is the reason why we want a public meeting rather than a Zoom meeting.
All right, there's Rick.
That is a point I think we can all appreciate right now.
Muted.
Okay. Is, is Beth, have you handled that motion yet or are you still debating?
We're still discussing the motion, so.
Okay.
And, and waiting for you.
Okay, who's next? I have a comment on this motion now. My comment is, I agree with the motion, because if this is the kind of technological problem we have with five people meeting and twenty watching, it's a disservice to the public if we try and do a full-blown public input meeting by Zoom. I mean, it's just too many technological weird things going on. So, that would be my view. Any other comments? Now, I, I can only see Beth. I don't know why that is.
No, we can hear you, so that's the important point. Nobody else is raising their hand. I can tell you that.
Yeah. Okay. So if nobody else has a comment, let's have a vote on the motion. There's no decisions until we can have an in-person meeting. All those in favor? Dana?
I.
Nip?
I'm puzzled, because I think we can have an in-person meeting based on what we've, we understand at this point about the rules.
Well
What, what are we doing? Punting?
No.
I don't understand what we're, what we're deciding.
My understanding of the motion is no decisions on whether to do it by Zoom or not. Not that Dana was forestalling all further debate. I guess the motion really is, you want to have it in-person, right, Dana?
That's essentially what it is. Yes, I want to have a, a meeting in-person.
Yeah. Let's, let's just say that in the motion. The meeting motion would be the public meeting should be in-person.
Okay, my turn to vote. I vote I.
Okay, Nip Tanner is an I. Beth Steele?
After this little fiasco, I'm an I as well.
Larry Dunn?
Uh, no.
No. And I'm a yes. So that is four to one in favor, so this meeting will be a public meeting. Maybe it can also be a hybrid. I mean, let's leave open the possibility we could provide for both, but I mean, before we ever get to doing this, we may have a better sense of, well, actually, no, that, I shouldn't say that. That's, that's against the intent of the motion. So the motion is public meeting only. Right?
Correct.
That's what just passed, so we'll do that. Okay. All right, so we don't need to worry about who manages the Zoom meeting, because Larry will be able to participate along with us. That was my list, not quite. Are there any other comments on this page two? We're back to the, the, what was called the proposed rules of engagement. Yeah, we pretty much covered all of that. Those, and we covered the annex. Okay. All right, that was everything I had on these proposed rules. This is gonna take some writing and revision, because some of those things were written for Zoom type participation, and if we're gonna do it in person, I'll have to go back and look through all of that tomorrow and see what needs to be changed. So I'll do what I did the last time, which was make the edits, send them out to you. We can't debate by email, but if you see an inaccuracy, an error, I can make those kind of corrections. And then we'll decide, you either want to have another meeting to discuss further those rules or we'll use them as the rules. Again, no debate via email, but corrections and, and agreement that it's ready to go, we can do. So that is that, and now the last item is
So Rick?
Yeah.
Dana Oviet, so do we need to have another meeting to discuss what you plan to put together, your, all your visions? Or hold off for now?
What do you mean by visions?
Your, your revisions of
Revisions, yes. That's what I just said, that I will redraft this based on the decisions we've made tonight. I'll send it out to you. It'll be one of those preliminary draft, not for public distribution. You get to look at it. If you see an error, you can tell me about it. We aren't gonna debate merits. If we have to debate merits, we'll have another meeting, so we do that in the public arena. If it's good to go after you see this redraft, then we'll use it. The question now is when to use it, because our, our last agenda item is selection of the date for a special meeting to obtain informal public comment on short-term rentals. Are we ready to pick that date yet?
Yes.
Okay, if we pick the date, that presumes that we'll get all of these kinks and, and things out of process. And I'm not sure how long it's gonna take to redraft this, because frankly, we've made a lot more changes than I had anticipated, so. Yeah, I'll need to look at this with a clear mind and not with internet problems or zoom meetings, so. Let's if we pick a date. We've opened the possibility that we may have to postpone it. Because we do have to have a meeting to pick a date. So we can pick a date tonight, but after a few days of looking this thing over, and if you guys don't like what you see as, as a preliminary draft and we need another meeting, then we would have to postpone. But we can do that, we just say, you know, the meeting's off.
We actually have to have a, a meeting to pick a date? Cause I mean, like, we have a meeting tonight, we just all agreed that we were available tonight. Do we really need a meeting solely for that purpose?
I thought we did, I can ask Casey to be sure, I mean, being an informal thing. Maybe we don't, because it's really, technically, it's nothing more than a special meeting, just like tonight was, so you are right in that regard. I thought it needed more structure around it, because it's, we're inviting the public to comment and I thought that added a layer, but maybe we don't, you know, he always says every decision you make, you should debate it and make the decision in public. But the caveat is you can set your agenda and your meetings and things like that without having to have a public meeting to, to pick another meeting. Eight, so you may be right Beth, and I think you probably are, and I'm just not thinking clearly right now. So we could pick a date tonight and we could decide to change it if need be over the next week. That said. We need to talk about venue as well as date. Needs to be a room. If we can do as Nip said, that news relief said. We could probably do downstairs in the firehouse, and if there was overflow, we could get it again for the next night, so. We have some latitude, we could pick June 1st and June 2nd, for example.
I thought it was to be a hybrid meeting.
Well, no.
Oh, cuz that's what we voted, cuz that was what was voted on, sorry, I'm not tracking.
Yeah. So Beth, you're basically saying we don't have to pass a motion tonight to, on a, a meeting date.
I don't think so, I mean, again, we don't, we don't have a meeting to pick any other.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, you know, I think you're right, I mean, it, it makes sense, it's a special, legally, it's a special meeting, John has said that to me. It's no different than any other special meeting we have, other than this time we're saying to the public, this is your opportunity to comment, so. In that sense, I think you're right, so let's pick the date at some other time, when, when we have more of these things ironed out. Okay, defer it for now. Alright, is there any other subject, any other comment on these three agenda items? We took it, we talked about the process and we're deferring the selection of a date. Anybody else, I can't see you, so you have to speak up.
I don't have any other comments, and no one else seems to be raising their hand, so.
Okay, in that case, somebody could move to adjourn, how is that?
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Okay, Beth Steele.
Larry seconded.
Okay. Alright, all in favor of that motion, say I.
I.
I, I see hands raised, Nip, are you saying I? Okay, alright, that's unanimous. Alright, thank you all, under duress, this still worked out to be a good meeting, very productive, I appreciate it. So we'll see you the next time.